Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call to order the Town of Hanson Planning Board meeting for July 8th, 2024 here at the Town of Hanson Planning Board. Meeting room, lower level of the Town of Hanson's Town Hall. Also like to announce for those in attendance that this meeting is being recorded for distribution on Women of Hanson Community Access with the playback times and other related information on this recording that can be found at WHCA.TV. In addition to that, we also have from Zoom feed, we have the Town Planner and we have Council that are on via Zoom feed. In attendance here at the Town Hall, we have a quorum of the Town of Hanson Planning Board with Mr. Ellis, myself, and Mr. Kement in attendance. Here, Mr. Cohen and Mr. Benardato are not in attendance this evening. The first item of business on our agenda this evening is the approval of the June 18th, 2024 Open Session Public Meeting Minutes as well as the June 18th, did I say it right? Yeah, 18th, 2024 Open Session Public Meeting Minutes. That's item one and two in your packet. Any discussion or any motion in regards to the minutes? Chair, an entertaining motion to approve the June 18th and the June 24th Open Session Public Meeting Minutes. Motion made by Mr. Kement, seconded by Mr. Ellis in regards to approval of the minutes. Any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a Zoom session going on. Mr. Ellis.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mr. Kement.
Yes.
3:02 minutes are approved. We have no public hearings this evening, so we're going to move right on to our appointments. We're going to get prepped for that, and that appointment will start at 6:35 in just one minute. So, gentlemen, if you would, and item number three underneath your Cannabis Control Commission, information in your packet that you have from... Ken, Tony.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Town Planner.
The Cannabis Control Commission, as I've shown many of the members of the Planning Board are aware, have come up with new regulations that have drastically changed the agreement, the whole agreement between towns and businesses. They've also required that these towns which Hanson would be part of come up with some new regulations that deal with social equity and the social equity policy. The social equity policy is something that the Select Board would have to adopt, and Town Council, I asked Town Council to come before the Planning Board and update us on all the new regulations, how it affects Hanson, and what does Hanson and the Planning Board and Select Board have to do. I did send out an email to the Select Board, to the Chair and the Town Administration's office, including any of the members of the Select Board to tonight's meeting if we wished to. I'm not sure if Town Council has set up any time with that separately, but I did invite them if they wanted to come in and listen to what needs to be done. And that's what I've done, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you, Tony, I appreciate that. So, it's 6:35, the time being 6:35, we're going to call to order this appointment on our agenda for the Cannabis Control Commission discussion. So, thank you very much, we have with us via Zoom, we have Town Council, Councilor Lyndon, thank you very much, and me, Tallerman, and Costa in regards to being able to give us an explanation on that. So, great introduction, Tony, thank you, and Counselor, please, take it away.
Sure, so recently, the CCC has promulgated regulations in response to a requirement of the recently enacted statute, and as part of those regulations, the municipalities who host marijuana establishments are required to take steps to promote social equity in the marijuana industry. And they do this by first adopting a social equity policy, which I provided a model to you, which would be adopted by the Select Board. And in that model, it talks about the steps that would need to be taken, including posting the requirements and the process for getting an HCA approval for marijuana business in town. On the town's website, in a certain location, appointing designated staff person to answer questions and calling social equity businesses through the process. Everything would have to be posted in a centralized location, including all of the applications for special permit or site plan review that are required, as well as the process for obtaining an HCA approved by the Select Board. And so, that would include any requirements that the Select Board may have for approval of a social equity applicant, as well as any other applicants. Review criteria, they would have to post their decisions on the website, as well as the number of establishments that are in town, and how many of those establishments are in equity business. And so, all of this is encompassed in the regulations, and then would need to be followed after adoption of the policy. And so, that's what you have in front of you. There's a provision in there at number five that you see that allows for an optional reduction of any special permit or any other permitting fees for social equity applicants to promote those types of businesses. The other thing that the regulations require is that the town, after adoption of this policy, either adopt regulations by the Select Board or a town bylaw, and they've provided a model bylaw for towns to adopt, which basically say exactly what the regulations state, but in a bylaw form, which would require a town meeting approval. If the Select Board did this in a regulation instead, it would not require a town meeting approval, it would just be a vote of the Select Board. And it could essentially take the same form as not turning into those two steps. The town can also just simply follow the process in the regulations, which I've already laid out, and then allow for social equity businesses on a one-to-one ratio until 50% of all marijuana establishments are social equity, or, you know, economic, I forget what the name of the business type those priority applicants are owners of those businesses. And so, the easiest way to move forward is simply for the Select Board to adopt a policy whereby every other HCA is awarded to a social equity applicant, and that would be satisfying the criteria, and then also follow the steps of posting everything on the website, including the decision criteria and how many businesses they have in town, and the percentage of equity applicants, and having a contact person and streamlined permitting and everything that I mentioned previously. So, that's basically what the town has to do in order to comply with the newly promulgated regulations. There's also been a recent case law that says, or it's not final, it's a decision of the court that is still subject to appeal, but basically says that the CCC should only be reviewing marijuana HCAs upon application for a new plant licensure and not for renewal. They've been recently reviewing HCAs that are already existing, existed prior to the new statute, and issuing notices of deficiency. And what the recent decision says is that the law is not applied retroactively, and that existing HCAs that were signed before the statute went into effect are still valid and do not need to be updated until they expire, until they're renegotiated, and that the CCC has exceeded their authority in that regard. But another thing that I wanted to bring to the board's attention of that we have been receiving, all the municipalities that have been receiving, notice of deficiency from the CCC regarding existing HCAs, and what that case said is that they should not be doing that with this existing HCA that was established before the law changed.
Do we know if they have reviewed, I'm sorry, I just want to, for the record, the Cannabis Control Commission has reviewed the Town of Hanson's one community host agreement with the one licensure already, correct?
I have not received any notice, or I don't think I have.
I think it would be safe to make the assumption that they must have, because the business is up and operating, correct? You know, that's to our knowledge, if this is up and operating.
Well, they were not required to review HCAs before the law changed.
Okay.
So, they're only doing that now.
Okay.
I think actually, they may have received a notice of deficiency, but the establishment has not reached out to me to renegotiate that HCA. And basically, what I've been telling municipalities is that it's up to them whether they want to renegotiate an existing HCA. If it's in the, I mean, if the town doesn't have the objection to renegotiating and using the model, then they can certainly do that. I would put that on us on the applicant to decide, you know, to propose terms or a new HCA to the town, because it's certainly not our job to make sure that they comply, that's the establishment's job.
Right, to comply. Counselor, is there any other concern, and for lack of a better term, is there any other concern that this going forward to the Board of, the Select Board, is there any concern that this all of a sudden opens Pandora's Box, where it starts a process of citizens' petition and those that, you know, fought against this being approved way a few years back, you know, that comes out of, is it by doing this, is there any concern that that does, it opens Pandora's Box, everybody gets involved again, you know, to make this, because this is going to have to go before town meeting for approval, correct?
No, it doesn't.
Oh, it does not?
It does not. This policy is to be adopted by the Select Board, and it's, I mean, the box is already opened, because these regulations came out, you know, there was a lot of opposition to these regulations.
Right.
A lot of pushback on both sides, and so, all that is already occurring, so this is just the first step in compliance by municipalities. And so, this was actually supposed to have already been done last year, but they have pushed off any sort of enforcement until next May, and so, the town still has ample time to get into compliance.
So, it's a two-step process, it's us making this recommendation to the Select Board, Select Board then voting on it and putting it in, and voting it in its law.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah. Mr. Ellis, and then Mr. Kement, status. No, glad we're saying what?
Well, I think there will be the votes on this, because the way it went the last time, it really gets slammed if they didn't want it.
Right.
And if we present it, is that going to put a bad sticker on our backs? I think I would give the most of a Select Board meeting there, and have to deal with the questions, however, for that Select Board. You know, I mean, we're doing, honestly, this is a zone initiation, so I don't know. It depends on how it's, it's not a zoning, right?
Mr. Kement.
So, my question is, under applicability, I never say that word right.
Applicability.
It says, "Provide training and technical assistance to applicants who have been disproportionately impacted." So, when you say this training and technical assistance, who's providing that? Is it the town or the state?
The CCC is providing that, but they're, the CCC's social equity program.
But, so, I guess my problem with that is, that's not clear in that document, to me, you know, maybe I'm not reading it right, but it seems to me it would be creating this policy where it says in there, "Provide training and technical assistance," you know, but it just doesn't seem to be clear who's responsible for that. And what I don't want to happen is the Hanson to be responsible for this social equity training, because there's a cost to that. And we're in difficult economic times in this town, you know, I don't know if you're aware of that, but things are going to get worse as we go forward, like the school and all kinds of competing things. So, for me, anything that's going to, you know, give up permitting fees and things like that, I would hope that the state would be the one that would be responsible for that, not the town. I don't know if that makes sense, but it just seems the way this document's reading to me is that we would have to do expedited permitting, and, you know, so, all of that, I mean, where's the equity in that for the town, I guess?
So, the purpose of that paragraph is just to state that, as to provide, that first sentence is to provide a little bit of background that the CCC's social equity program provides the training and technical assistance to applicants. And then, the applicants get certified by the CCC, which is in the next sentence. So, the Town of Hanson would just be adopting essentially the CCC's definition of social equity applicants, because under Hanson's policies, the applicants would be those that have already been certified as eligible to participate in the social equity program, or are certified as economic empowerment priority applicants according to the CCC. So, all that is supposed to do, what the intention of that paragraph is, is to say, these are social equity applicants as defined by the CCC. The town is stating or reiterating that those applicants certified by the CCC are the ones that this policy applies to.
Okay, so, like, item one and item two, right? It says, "The Town of Hanson will enhance," and that's like some kind of a misspelling or something, "The Town of Hanson will enhance marketing and outreach to potential social equity applicants." So, this, who's going to provide this marketing and outreach? So, it's, again, it's not clear who is financially responsible for the things that are happening within that item one and two, because it says, from what I can read, "The Town of Hanson will provide permitting, technical assistance." There's a cost that comes with that.
That's required by the regulations.
Well, that's all well and good, that it's required by the regulations, but now, the state is asking the town to pick up the cost of economic empowerment and applicants navigating the Town of Hanson's cannabis project, like, this financial cost to this, so...
That was one of my comments to the CCC, it's an unfunded mandate for municipalities.
Absolutely, it's a better way to put it.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah, you also, there's also a, the Planning and Development Department, which I believe would be the Planning Department, will create a website with guidance and resources for applicants and a list of all required permits. I'm not sure there's anybody in the Planning Department that is website savvy to be able to have that as an additional duty.
Nor is it part of their job.
It's not part of their job. So, as far as, as far as one of our members, that would be a bargaining unit trigger, I would assume.
I mean, it could be anyone in town, you can change that, it's just, there needs to be a page, and it makes the most sense for it to be on the Planning Department's website, but it could be somewhere else. It just explains what the process is in order to open up the marijuana business in Hanson.
Yeah, it just, Counselor, it says, "The Planning and Development Department will create a website." You know, if Tony has any changes to the website, he sends it over to the IT Department, which we don't have right now, to my knowledge, unless Tony is with somebody. So, it sounds like, I mean, that's, again, an unfunded mandate, was that the language that came down from the state?
Yeah, these are in the regulations, so this mimics the regulations and the requirements that are in the regulations, just, it's basically just saying, "The town will do everything you're requiring us to do in order to comply."
So, we need to make a recommendation on this this evening to the Select Board, is that correct?
Basically, I mean, it would be helpful if you could make a recommendation if you have any changes, but I was giving you the opportunity to do so before they adopt the policy.
Oh, thank you, appreciate that very much, that's, I absolutely, listening to the Board members here tonight, I absolutely think that, that there should be some cautions sent to the Select Board in regards to that, number two, that the Select Board should really do a deep dive into who's responsible, who's going to be responsible for that. I think you're... Yeah, Town Planner.
Sorry. There was going to be one of my questions for you, Liz, was the expectation of the CCC for the Planning Department, obviously, for a smaller town, whether it's staff-wise, it seemed like, it's like this expectation, the Planning Department is going to be the liaison if you will?
Right, exactly.
With this, providing a lot, I think obviously, a larger municipality would provide such as multilingual, and the ability, I mean, I know, obviously, it seems like we have no choice but to sort of comply with the regulations, but that was going to be my question, what was the expectation of the Planning Department? Is it just, you set up a webpage, here's the steps, here's what you need to do, or is it an expectation that the Planning Department would be the liaison, and, lack of a better phrase, sort of hold their hand in each stage of the process to get into business? Is that the expectation?
No, I mean, the way that I envision this playing out, and the way it's played out in other municipalities, is that, you know, everything gets just posted in one centralized location. So, if you already have a permitting page on the planning website, you would just add to it and just say, you know, "Contact so-and-so at the Select Board's office," or whoever the admin is for the Select Board, "to find out the requirements for obtaining an HCA." That's step one. Step two is, you know, look at the zoning map, and then provide a link to that zoning map, and say, "Here are marijuana bylaws, link to that, and say, 'Here are applications, special permit and site plan review.'" If you have questions regarding whether these provisions of the zoning bylaw apply to your specific facility, please contact Tony. And so, you would just be ushering them through the Planning Board approval, or, you know, telling them what applications, or giving them the applications, linking them on the website. And then, after that, the next step would be, "Contact the building inspector for your building permit." And if you are in a wetland, delineated area, then you would reach out to this person for conservation purposes.
That's all.
And so, that's really, like, they just want everything in a centralized location so that these applicants can just look at that one page and say, "Oh, okay, the first step is HCA, second step is planning, third step is conservation if applicable, or building inspector for a permit." And it's all on one page, and they have the contact people listed for those specific approvals. And then, you also have to post just, or the Select Board, or someone at the Select Board would have to post the criteria for approval, the score sheet, which they're supposed to provide, which I haven't seen yet, and then the results of those decisions, like, this is how many people applied, and this is how many equity applicants we have. If we only have one, then that's all that goes on the website under that portion.
Can I ask another question?
Mr. Chair, could I?
Yes, Town Planner.
So, Liz, we have a sort of a business guide in town?
Mm-hmm.
So, this is, let's say, a separate business guy, if you will, for cannabis, would that be fairly good?
Correct.
Okay. And do you have guys that sort of won't get to this point, that are going to help us get through that what other communities may have done?
So, I haven't, I have created a sort of model that says almost exactly what I just said to you in more, you know, detailed form, that I can certainly provide, just what the website should include, and how it should be set up, and what I see that process looking like.
Yeah, that would be good.
I haven't seen a fully vetted website yet.
That'd be great, I would give us some guidance. And would the town be vetted personally, policy or a bylaw?
I think a policy is just the easier, more streamlined solution to compliance, because in essence, it's the same thing as a bylaw, but you don't have to go to town meeting. So, or it would be called a Select Board regulation, essentially. And the Select Board has the authority to adopt regulations for permitting, and so, this would just be another one of those, and it wouldn't require town meeting approval. And then, the third thing is, you don't adopt, you just have this policy, you don't adopt a bylaw, you don't adopt a regulation, you just only accept social equity applicants, essentially, and make sure that it's a 50-50 ratio.
And my last question was to Chair, the, we have, there's a compliance, and if you don't comply, what's the, what are the punishments, if you will?
So, in May of 2025, they will start issuing fines for noncompliance.
May of 2025?
Yep.
Okay. So, Mr. Kement has a question.
So, under section three, right, there seems to be some ambiguous language here, because, again, to Tony's point earlier about, you know, fines and so forth like that, well, the language pretty much says, you know, "The Planning and Development Department will endeavor to streamline the permitting for those applications." That seems ambiguous to me, because, what does that actually mean, right? And who does, you know, it means different things, well, yeah.
It's really up to you to decide what that means, but it basically means you won't put any unnecessary barriers in the permitting process, you won't hold up applicants.
Well, Special Permit Granting Authority is the Select Board.
No, the Special Permitting Authority is the ZBA.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you for that, yeah. So, Special Permit Granting Authority is, yeah, that's right, thanks, so the ZBA. And there's no language in here that talks anything about the ZBA.
Okay, so, I think that would need, that's one of the things that would need to be updated in this plan.
Thanks, Joe. So, is this on agenda for tomorrow night's Select Board meeting here in Hanson?
No, Mr. Chair, it's not, this is, they started here, and I did pass it along again to the Chair of the Select Board and the Chair's office. So, at this point, you know, I guess, of course, the Board, I'd say we suggest that the Board, thinking about taking into consideration at this time, and addressing issues that they have and concern, and reach out again to the Select Board's office, and, you know, we can circle back around.
Yes.
At the next meeting.
That sounds great, and with the Board's approval, if the Board doesn't mind, can I get the Board's approval to reach out to the Chair of the Select Board in order to be able to have a discussion with the Chair of the Select Board to talk about better defining some of these, some of these, I guess, regulations.
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you. All right, and so, we'll do that, and we'll have that in prep, let's see, so, today's the eighth. So, Tony, we should be able to have this cleared up by August 12th, so that'd be the first meeting for August, so we'll be able to have that better defined by then, so, is that all right? We put this on for tentative for that meeting, Tony?
Yes, we may, might have been sooner than that, Mr. Chair, because of some of the items that are on tonight's agenda. So, I don't know if you want to put it on now, or if you want it to be two weeks in a row.
So, the 26th?
No, sorry, it would be the 5th and the 12th.
Oh, you're thinking we're going to have two weeks in a row, I'm sorry, what did I say?
The Planning Board's next meeting, if we go to August, would be August the 12th.
Yeah, 12th.
But because of some of the things that are on tonight's agenda and timelines, August 5th may be the better meeting to meet because of deadlines.
Okay. So, why don't we, why don't we plan on having this all cleared up by August 26th, because it's not, so you said, May of '25 is when it needs to be set in place, so if we do August 26th tentative, that would keep us clear and give us plenty of time to kind of hash out some of the details.
Yes.
All right, the Chair would contend a motion to postpone the further discussion until the tentative August 26th, 2024 Planning Board meeting. Let's move. Motion's been made by Mr. Kement, seconded by Mr. Ellis, any discussion in regards to that motion?
Yeah, I just want to make one quick comment for the record. It feels to me like, you know, we have all of these regulations, like planning and the town and so forth, and it just seems the state keeps turning around and, you know, adding... adding, um, new things to the rules, you know, like, uh, this, this equity thing and, you know, MBTA community stuff. And it's like, uh, what about the regular rules? I think there's more exceptions to the rules than actually the rules.
Yes.
It's starting to look ridiculous.
Yep.
Like, let's come up with a new plan, you know, rather than just keep, you know, adding, adding on and addendums to the rules and regulations and exceptions to it. It's getting to the point where it's difficult to traverse this stuff because, oh yeah, by the way, don't forget, you know, uh, there's an exception to that. You know, it just goes on and on like that. It's like, you know, the, you know, they're asking us to streamline the permitting for these, um, you know, social equity things, yet at the same time, they're making it incredibly difficult and, and it's almost like a minefield for the, for us as a planning board and a town, you know? So I just wanted to put that out.
Now, great point, no, and as it was stated earlier, the unfunded mandates, that's the difficulty.
Just to follow up on what you're trying to say. It is correct. And the next thing you know, still have to, you'll have to point somebody off the board here to manage it and go down and inspect it and so on and so forth.
Yeah.
You're all gonna have to hire somebody.
We're all gonna be busy volunteering help for a fire department and police department.
We have to go to the other meeting in a minute.
I think, okay. It's like we're gonna have to go to the other meeting. Is it gonna stop? Did it get to countdown already?
Tony, are we done yet?
No, we're still, we're still, we've got two minutes or...
Two minutes.
All right, so we have a motion on the table to put this, postpone this discussion until, uh, and we're gonna table it, postpone this discussion until August twenty-sixth. All, all those in favor, roll call, Mr. Ellis?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Mr. Kim?
Aye.
Three zero two, so we'll put that on for that agenda. Is there anything else before we get cut off here that council wants to chime in about?
Did you wanna talk to the selectman about it?
Well, I'll find out if, if there's an appearance before the select board prior to this, but I'll, I'll have, reach out to the chair and have a discussion with that, actually, with the, with the chair for the select board.
Well, no, just Tony, Tony knows where to find me and, um, he can give me direction as to what he needs me to do next.
Council, thank you very much for your support, appreciate your help.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, uh, well, we're gonna take a brief recess before we, uh, go into our next agenda items, so that way we can switch over to our other Zoom meeting. So it is seven oh four, we're in recess. So you want to do your alt R to stop the recording?
Alt.
Yep, alt R will stop that.
Okay.
And you can keep the, the tape though, that's what I just do, because I'll bang the gal work and we'll come back up. Do you want to start the other meeting?
Yeah, you have to, yeah. Okay. I am not a professional at this.
That's right, that's why we're here.
See, uh, Zoom aficionado, huh?
No, I am not.
Uh, is Zoom aficionado?
I am not, are you?
Sadly, unfortunately, at this point, yeah.
I don't know where it is.
So, uh, where's your other meeting?
Appointments. How about this one? Oh, God.
Let's hear that, was Tony the admin, has he got to start it?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that would be...
Me? Yeah. Yeah, click, is that the, is that the, uh, that was the first one, so that's the second one right there, right?
Hmm.
So you wanna double-click that?
Is that the right one?
Yeah, uh, nine two six.
Yep.
Nine two six, zero four three six, two seven six zero, and then the nine zero one five seven four, so you can start that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure you had it up.
Thank you. Watch me here, yeah. Wait, so we gotta do that same thing where we gotta start?
You do recording, the, uh... And then alt R.
Yeah, alt R starts like...
Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
All right, you did your alt R?
I did alt R.
And you're recording on the, like, the handheld?
Yes.
Great.
I think so.
It's July eighth, seven oh seven PM, we are back from a brief technical recess, uh, while we're trying to get our second Zoom meeting up and operational, so we're up and operational, we are recording. So we're gonna go on to our next item of business on our agenda for appointments, and that is the economic development supplement, discuss supplement in accordance with Mass. General Law forty-one, section eighty-one D. Tom Planer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as part of the master plan, one of the, under section eighty-one D of the, uh, of the supplement control law, there is only a economic development supplement. And, as you can see on the screen.
Yeah.
It states, so what, what the law states is that anyone, any county that's filing a state grants is supposed to have an economic development supplement on file with the town court. I inquired with our town court, a bunch of people have on file, and what it's supposed to do, we have goals, and it's gonna be one page, it has a kid, it doesn't have to be extensive, and list the goals regarding industrial commercial development, affordable housing, and the preservation of parks and open space. So I prepared a economic development supplement with some goals on each one of those topics with a brief discussion of those topics, and this is something that's organic, so it can be updated yearly, uh, biannually, however the town feels. I've never seen anyone ask for this, uh, as far as any of the grants, but I suppose, um, if they did, at least we have on our file, we can say that we have on our file.
Yeah, perfect.
So, um, I created it, I asked the planning to take a look at it, uh, see if you wanna add anything to it, edit it in any way, and then when you're ready, we just approve it, file it with the town court's office. It's on file, we bring it back, let's say, once a year, uh, look at it, see if there's any goals we wanna change, is there any goals that we've achieved, somehow, you know, we've been there, done that, as I intended that we have a specific goal that we wanna go after. And of course, I tried to, I did my best to incorporate what the recently finalized master plan has, some of the goals that are in that master plan, into this document.
Uh, first and foremost, Tony, great catch, thank you for catching that.
Oh, you're welcome. I, I thought, I thought it was a, it's one of those, it seems like it's an odd thing in the subject of the control law, and I also, just to verify, I went online to mass.gov to take a look at the most current section, and this, and this still does exist under that section of the subdivision control law.
But, but these are one of those prime examples that the board was just speaking about recently in regards to the fact that this stuff comes down, and if you don't check every, every box, cross every T and dot every I, and, and then we're, you know, trying to apply for grant, and they go, ah-huh, you know, so it really was, it's a, it's a great catch, Tony, it really was.
Yes.
The write-up about the open spaces is, is spot on. Do you need a decision on this tonight, Tony, or do you want us to also, you know, kind of, you know, incubate this and have, and have any input from the board for the next meeting?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, this, this doesn't have a, a deadline to it, um, obviously, I'd like, I'd want you to look at it, go over it, think about it, what do you wanna answer, if you want to leave, and then we'll put something on file, so you don't have to do anything with it tonight, basically take it home, study it, and at the next meeting, let's say on August twenty-sixth, if everybody's kicked it around and you're happy with it, uh, we get some of, you know, changes, we can make some edits, and then we can just file it with the town court.
Perfect. Any questions from the board? I entertain a motion from the board to postpone discussion of the economic development supplement from the master plan until August twenty-sixth.
So move.
Motion's been made by Mr. Kim, seconded by Mr. Ellis. Uh, any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, uh, roll call, vote, sorry, Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I'm an aye, Mr. Kim?
Yes.
I, that's three zero two, Tony, so we'll, we'll place this on the eight twenty-sixth. Uh, and, and Tony, can you do us a favor, please just send this out again to Mr. Ben Ado, Mr. Cohen, let him know that we postponed this until the eight twenty-sixth, uh, and we'll look here for them just to do a little review on that and have that prepped and ready, shuffled and ready for eight twenty-sixth.
Wonderful.
Next on the agenda, discuss amending the Town of Hanson zoning map and the Town of Hanson land use regulation zoning bylaw in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law chapter forty A, section five and section three A, the zoning act. MBTA district map, the district map outlines the areas designated to allow multifamily housing as of right. The district meets compliance model requirements established by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, E O H L C. The current Town of Hanson zoning map must be updated to include the new MBTA zoning district. Draft zoning bylaws, the bylaws provide zoning regulations for setbacks, land areas, et cetera. The bylaws conform with the sample zoning provided by the E O H L C and have been tailored to meet the needs of the Town of Hanson. Tom Planer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So what, as you, as you're all aware, within the town meeting, uh, and so the calendar, what town meeting, and the deadlines, the laws is opened up, and because of that, the, even though this bylaw was shot down, uh, in May, because it was approved by the planning board and supported by the planning board, we can bring it back to October town meeting. But that being said, we still have to follow all the requirements of section five of chapter forty A to the zoning act on getting a bylaw approved. Therefore, what the planning board would do tonight is to move this to the select board for their consideration, the select board would then turn around and give it to the planning board and ask for their report. At that point, the planning board will have to hold their public hearing, and then at that public hearing, the planning board will submit the report to the select board, who can then decide what they want to do, whether to move it to town meeting or not. So because of the deadlines coming up in the calendar, I had to amend and bring this to the, uh, planning board, uh, that I...
Just, just for clarification, Tony, I just wanna read into the record for clarification, section five of chapter forty A, section five, adoption or change of zoning ordinances or bylaws procedure that falls underneath the planning board. Just for anybody listening in the public, that's what we're discussing this evening.
Yes, the planning board is one of the bodies that can propose a zoning bylaw or amendment. Through the, and through the process, we, so, the planning board is one of the various boards that can apply for a zoning bylaw or a bylaw amendment. Once that body proposes that amendment, it goes to the select board for their consideration. The select board will then ask the planning board, no matter who proposed that bylaw, it just so happens in this case, it is the planning board, but whoever applied, whoever submitted that amendment, the select board's gonna look at the planning board and ask them to prepare a report and have a public hearing to discuss that bylaw, which is what, uh, the, the public hearing would do. So tonight, all this is, is the bylaw that took place in May is the same one here, there's no changes other than that, there's no changes. So what I'm asking you to do is vote if you wish to move this forward to the select board for their consideration, and then what the select board will do is if they wish to consider it, they'll ask the planning board for a report, the planning board will hold a public hearing, if that so happens, it would probably be the first week of August, around August fifth, because of the deadlines for submitting warrants, uh, we'd have a public hearing, and then at that point, if the board wished to continue, uh, wished to submit a, a report to the select board, they could, and then the select board would then determine whether to move this on to town meeting. The select board could move it on to town meeting, the select board could say no, uh, but this is just a matter of procedure.
So just for clarification, for anybody in the public eye, that are citizens, town citizens, that are watching or listening to this re-recording, uh, that's being broadcast on WHCA, this was exactly what was explained during the May town meeting, from lack of a better term, as a quote-unquote, second bite at the apple. That's kind of a bad term to be able to use, but without having something better to explain that, uh, this is a regulatory requirement that the Town of Hanson Planning Board has to fulfill, and also the, uh, the, the select board of the town in regards to the MBTA zoning act. We are fulfilling the regulatory requirements that were well-established months before our last town meeting, in preparation for the upcoming town meeting. But the Town of Hanson, as it stands today, during today's meeting, July eighth, as it stands today, the Town of Hanson is in tentative compliance with the MBTA Community Zoning Act up until the point of December of this year.
If I may, Mr. Chair, if I may add to that?
Please.
Under section five, when a bylaw or an amendment is shot down or denied or defeated at town meeting, it usually means two years for it to come back, unless it was supported by the planning board, then it can come back within that two years. So I'm in, I'm working with town council on this, and if the select board so moves this to the point where there's a public hearing before the planning board, that meeting would be posted, the public would obviously be able to attend and make any comments regarding the bylaw as written, so, um, but this, again, is just a matter of procedure.
And, and, and from, from, from our perspective to the public, it is highly recommended that those that want to be in attendance, attend not only the select board's, the next select board's meeting, but also any meetings after that, including the Town of Hanson's planning department's public outreach meeting if it comes to that point. So the next step, as the town planner was saying, is that the board would send this on to the select board, and then after the select board, it would come back to the planning board to hold a public hearing. We cannot stress enough and, and about how important it is, uh, with the, with the discussions at the last town meeting, how important is that town citizens come to the board meetings, come to the public hearings, and listen and get educated about what, what could be coming down the pipeline, uh, yet again, I can't determine that, obviously I can't see the future, uh, but with that, uh, the board, what's the board's recommendation as far as the, uh, MBTA, um, land use regulation zoning act, chapter five requirement that we have? Is there a motion on the floor to recommend to the select board? I'll call that out one more time, is there a motion, what's the will of board, is there a motion on the floor to recommend, uh, to the select board? So that's a second call, Tony, I'm gonna call that as a dead call, so please inform the select board that the planning board, uh, you know, inform the select board, the town administrator, the planning board does not have any fruitful motion to forward this on to the select board at this time.
Yes, sir.
I would like more information from the select one. Myself, or...
Yeah, that's, I feel like there's not, there isn't enough information here to really truly make a decision.
Sure.
So I think more discussion should go forward, forward before we recommend this for the select.
Sure. Tony, is there any possibility to try to put something together? I'm going to call that as a dead call. So please inform the select board that the planning board, uh, you know, inform the select board, the town administrator, the planning board does not have any fruitful motion to forward this on to the select board at this time.
Okay.
I would like more information from the select one. Myself.
Yeah, that's, I feel like there's not, there isn't enough information here to really truly make a decision.
Sure.
So I think more discussion should go forward, forward before we recommend this for the select.
Sure. Tony, is there any possibility to try to put something together?
Because it just seems to me that we just voted to, to not support this at town meeting. Why would we be changing zoning regulations and rules and maps in relation to that? You know, so we're, we're in compliance right now, but we won't be as, as of December. Until we vote in October to support the, that, why wouldn't we have hearings based on it?
Uh, the only, so in order for this to be able to get to the point where it comes back to us for a public hearing would be a recommendation for this to move forward to the select board, their input, and then it will come back. So in order for us to be able to hold a public hearing, we have to hear back from the select board, they're the legislative body. So we can make a recommendation to them. They would then have to put it as a, you know, on as a law for us to open a public hearing and then have that maybe possibly do, and then have that go on to the town meeting in October.
So at the public hearing, right, we don't get to vote really, it's just a public hearing.
It's just a public hearing, that's right.
All right, so my, my position stands then.
Great. So Tony, please inform the town administrator and the select board that the, there was, it was a dead vote, there was no motion to move this, but there wasn't any, sorry, it wasn't a dead vote, there wasn't any movement at all in regards to this. No vote taken. My question would be, with that result, which I support as well, with that result, my question would be, does the select board have the capacity to be able to take that up in and of themselves? Or are they able to properly react to that decision of the planning board?
I, I would, I would double check with town council, but I don't believe so. Because the way it works is, um, you know, I'd have to just double check that section of the, of the bylaw.
Great.
Of the zoning act.
Can't they request that's to do with? They do it with other stuff. Well, that's what they, yeah, yeah, well, but I think the problem, if, if, so it's not being moved this evening, I don't think that they could have any kind of a hearing on it because it hasn't been moved too late. So I don't think, they can't act unilaterally, that's the, that's the point.
Well, can't, can't they request that we be, by their, if they wanted a zoning thing, they'd request that.
Yeah, Tony's going to check into that.
Hey, they can, they can ask us again and, you know, I guess what I'm saying is if they come back to ask us, right, we need more information, we don't have enough information yet.
Yeah, Tony will find, he'll get clarification about that through council.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, the town planner.
So, uh, Section five states that adoption or change of zoning ordinance or bylaws may be initiated by the submission to the city council or board of selectmen of a proposed ordinance, zoning ordinance or bylaw by city council or board of selectmen, a board of appeals, by an individual owning land to be affected by change or adoption by request of registered voters of the town pursuant to Section ten of Chapter thirty nine, by ten registered cities, by ten registered voters of the city, by a planning board, by a regional planning agency, or by other methods provided by municipal charter. The board of selectmen or city council shall within fourteen days of such receipt of such zoning ordinance or bylaw, submit it to the planning board for review.
Right.
So on their own volition, the select board could re, uh, adopt, amend, or change a bylaw, or such as this bylaw, but they would still have to submit it to the, to the planning board for a public hearing and a report and a review.
Or any one of the other entities that you, you mentioned in the Sector five.
Right, any one of those entities can propose a bylaw.
Yep.
They can propose to amend a bylaw. No matter what, it has to go to the planning board for review and a public hearing.
And a public hearing, right. So as it stands right now, Tony, that, this, there's no motion, no motion to move this in any direction from the planning board.
Understood.
Uh, next on the agenda, discuss amending the Town of Hanson land use regulation zoning bylaw to create a new bylaw under Section six oh governing battery storage farms. Town Planner.
Uh, this, I don't know if you remember, but I believe this was Article thirty four back in, uh, May of twenty twenty three.
Yes.
It was approved at the town meeting. It went before the Attorney General's office. The Attorney General's office found some deficiencies and did not approve it. I am working with town council right now to address those deficiencies. So this was a bylaw that was approved at our meeting. This is regarding battery storage farms as they, you know, sort of on their own. And so the bylaw would be amended to address the deficiencies pointed out by the Attorney General's office. And then, um, would go, move forward to head to its town meeting for approval. So I'm asking the board to, uh, request that the select board consider this, uh, bylaw. And then we'll move it towards the public hearing stage again, what we just spoke of with this.
Same, same process. So motions could be made by Mr. Kemet. Seconded by Mr. Ellis. There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Kemet, seconded by Mr. Ellis to move, uh, to move the Town of Hanson land use regulation zoning bylaw, Section six oh governing battery storage farms, as the town planner had described, to the select board for further review, uh, with input and for return to the planning department, uh, planning board for public hearing. Roll call vote, any discussion regardless of that motion?
Yes. Who wrote the original, um, bylaw? That was, that was Tony?
Yeah.
With the aid of town council.
Yeah, and then I went through, yep.
Okay. So you wrote it and then submitted it to town council and they approved it? And now it, it didn't get approved by the Attorney General? I think that's an important distinction that we should make.
The reason they didn't get two by terms over was basically like two things. One was the Walcam case. We had some language in that bylaw that the state, the AG's office felt, um, went, went against the Walcam case. And the second was a phrase regarded, in reference to a, a map, which we didn't have a map. So because of that, they felt that it didn't, it didn't, it didn't pass the test.
Which is funny because the Walcam case went into litigation as we were do, as we were developing the bylaw.
The, the map thing is, is definitely, you can't reference a map in a bylaw if you don't have a map.
So I, I, I have a question, Tony, in regards to this discussion before we forward this on. Is there any possibility we could enforce a moratorium, uh, while this is, is being discussed and edited?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chair, because of the Dover Act. It, that, that addresses solar and you can't, and basically you can't stop it, you cannot. And one of the, one of the key things is we, the language that we have is we do have it a more, uh, uh, almost like a moratorium, I believe it's a tier one. And the AG's office felt that that was violating the, the, the Walcam case somehow. It, you know, it, they, they didn't like it. So I'm working with town council to get everything up to, you know, revised to address all the AG's issues. So when do we get to that point with the public hearing? We will have, uh, a revised language to address all that and then we'll have town council come in and speak as well.
Great, thank you. All right, any other discussion? Is a motion on the floor? Mr. Ellis?
Just to refresh my memory on this, is this battery storage farms for, uh, for electrical use?
Photovoltaic battery storage farms.
Oh, is it for resale?
Oh, no, no, it's for, for.
Storage of electricity.
Storage of electricity, yeah, first of all, it wasn't for resale. All right, good one. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I am an aye, Mr. Kemet?
Aye.
Three zero two. Tony, thank you, and continue that on to the select board.
Will do.
Uh, moving on, under a new topic of the agenda for this evening, board business. Approved planning department's policy and procedural handbook dated July one, twenty twenty four.
Uh, Mr. Chair, was still making revisions to that. Uh, I did submit, uh, I did submit to you in your packet was a, can you see that on the screen, code of conduct?
Yeah, the code of conduct, right.
They have copies.
And I, I figure that might be something that the board may wish to add to the, to the book. I think it might address some of Mr. Kemet's questions that he had at the last meeting. If it doesn't, I mean, we can, uh, use it as a template and then maybe, uh, refine it.
Yeah, I just, I just read it really quickly just now. And the thing I still don't really see is, um, you know, redress for a, a planning board member or an elected member who's feels that they have some grievance against one or more of their other, uh, select, you know, uh, plans. So can we talk about that, rewriting that? So that's.
Okay, so I'll, I'll do a little more research on that.
Okay.
And see if there's some other type of language I could find, but I'm not sure if you want to maybe even add this document as part of it.
Absolutely, yep.
And we can add to it.
There is some language in that third page there, the enforcement of things. If there's a report that goes to the top manager, that's getting investigated, then the top manager will come down. So there is some language in there. Uh, is there something else that we could carry to, uh, August twenty sixth, Tony?
Yes, sir.
I'm taking a motion to postpone further discussion about the planning department's policies of procedural handbook until August twenty sixth. Sure move. Motion's been made by Mr. Kemet, seconded by Mr. Ellis. Any discussion regards to that motion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I am an aye, Mr. Kemet?
Aye.
Three zero two, Tony. So that will be on to eight twenty six. Paul and Kevin are in for a surprise for that night.
The six and the sixteen.
Twenty six.
Twenty six.
Eight twenty six. Uh, on to board member subcommittee updates. Open space, I'm very happy to report that the select board, uh, nominated or appointed, sorry, not nominated, appointed, uh, myself back again on to open space, I've got to go and get sworn in. I have reached out and had conversations with, uh, well, yeah, Mr. Clemens, uh, to revamp the open space committee. Uh, Mr. Clemens has a few candidates, uh, to be able to come in and hopefully fill those vacancies. So hopefully we're going to have some, uh, pretty good movement here for open space, especially with the fact that we need it for the master plan. As far as OCPC alternate delegate, there was a recent meeting, meeting with the OCPC committee, uh, it was just their, their kind of open house meet and greet. Uh, there were some discussions about their new elections, elected president is Becky Colletta, Mary Waldron is also the director over there. So nothing too great that came out of that. OCPC, obviously they have a very good website. If you need to see and, and, and discuss anything about what OCPC can add to us for a regional planning department, that's great, that's a great resource. They had a lot of information in there about, um, cycling, which I thought was very, you know, cycling communities. I always spent a lot of time on that website. So that's, um, the ball's rolling there. Uh, Mr. Ellis, High Street Park Committee.
Yeah, we had an excellent meeting, the last meeting with the town planner and the town, uh, Lisa Green, uh, to move this forward and, and Tony's working on getting a proposals. So it's moving forward.
Nice. Uh, Mr. Kemet, CPC.
I had very little to add to that. We have our meeting on Wednesday and we have several applications that will be entertaining and certainly looking forward to that.
Great. Uh, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Ben and Otto are not here this evening. We're going to move on to our town planner update. Town Planner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just wanted to bring you up to date on the Pratt place covert replacement. We met with Red Davis who's doing the design work and the engineering. They've done some preliminary, uh, field work. They, uh, we're going out there to establish the resource areas. And we're looking at ways to, most cost effective way of replacing that covert while meeting the, uh, stream crossing regulations. And so that, that process is in the works. Zero West Washington Street that has kicked off, the company for, uh, DHB will be going out on the tenth of July to swag the wetlands. And then they'll be beginning engineering work as far as surveying and so forth to get some kind of plan. And so that's, that's moving forward. Battery storage bylaw, touched on that, so that's all set.
Tony, once again, Zero West Washington, can you?
That is, that is the property adjacent to the existing location for the water department. We received a grant from Bass Development.
Oh, oh, thank you.
To the Bass town owned property, it's in the commercial industrial zone.
Yes.
And, uh, look at, you know, what type of development could be obtained in that on that property, so the ball's rolling on that.
Great.
And, uh, one quick off topic is Philip Street, the town owned property there, uh, Bass Housing is, uh, we're going to be rolling, the ball's going to be rolling on that to get the, um, resource area established on that property and see what impact it has. And then we can make determinations from there that that's a viable site for any type of future housing through the Hanson County Department. And, uh, now as far as the dates for the next meeting, uh, the date you see, July twenty second, if, if the board wishes to meet, if not, the first meeting would be up August the twelfth. Due to the deadlines for the warrants for the town meeting in October, uh, up to August fifth would be the better date. So the planning board would be willing to meet on August the fifth. I can set up a public hearing to deal with the battery storage farms for that date. Uh, and then we could have the regular second meeting in August, which I believe you said, Mr. Chair, was the twenty sixth?
Twenty sixth.
Yeah, so we could, we could just do that.
Sure. All right, so before we go on to that, Tony, for good of the order, does anybody have any questions or comments with the town planner in regards to the town planner update?
I do.
Mr. Kemet?
I was just curious, I know, going back to Pratt Place, I know you're saying that you were going to, uh, look into the regulations for, um, you know, so I guess my question is because it's the North River, it's part of the, I mean, Indian Head River is a tributary to the North River, do they require notification for any work that's done there?
I don't know, but I will find out.
Okay, I, I, I'm on that, so I can reach out to them as well. But I just wanted to get that, uh, on the radar because I believe that, uh, the Indian Head River is part of the North River's, um, you know, protective water, so to speak.
Yeah, I would definitely get some information on that.
Right, thank you. Mr. Ellis?
Uh, Tony, is there any update on what's going on with the, uh, project on County Road for Ellis Development?
That project right now, the developer is having some dealings with the D E P. I hope to actually have scheduled a meeting this week. Unfortunately, uh, COVID kicked off in on Friday and has put me out for a few days ago. So as soon as I get back to the office, I'm going to be trying to schedule a meeting between the developer and different town departments to get an update as to what's going on.
Thank you. I'm just curious. No relation.
Uh, so, uh, unless there is any objection of the board, we're looking at scheduling the next planning board meeting on August fifth, which would be, uh, unusual for the board as our planning board meetings are usually on the second, the fourth, but in regards to some of the discussions here this evening, uh, you know, I feel it necessary to take the second meeting in July, bump that back a little bit, first meeting in August, bump that forward. And what's the will of the board?
You guys can do whatever you want. I can tell you I probably won't be here.
It's okay. But can you motion to have that?
Yeah, I'll vote for that.
Motion's been made to have the next planning board meeting for Monday, August fifth at six thirty PM. Tentatively in the select board meeting room, that's where we usually have it. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion in regards to that motion?
I might not be here.
Okay, we'll get the other two. So seeing that, all is a favor, I'm sorry, we're on Zoom, so roll call vote, Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
And I am an aye, Mr. Kemet?
Aye.
Three zero two, our next planning board meeting will be on eight, five, twenty twenty four at six thirty PM.
I thought somebody said that's six.
No.
Oh, good.
Yeah, that's it. The next one after that will be the twenty sixth.
Yeah.
Any other discussions for the good of the order? Seeing none, a heading motion to a term?
So what?
No, no, this was due though. You know, it'll be, it'll be adjusted.
Squeeze in? Yeah. Motion's been made to, for adjournment, second, motion been made by Mr. Kement, properly seconded by Mr. Ellis for adjournment. Any discussion in regards to that? Seeing none, it is seven forty two, we are adjourned.